Mr. Simpson, let me know when we're ready. We're ready. Six o'clock here on October the 10th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting the Lancaster County Council to order. Welcome everyone here tonight. And would you please rise and join Councilmember Charlie McGiff if she alleges that our pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, as we move into this meeting tonight, please guide us with making good decisions and wise decisions for our county. Also ask prayers for our citizens, our staff, and my fellow councilmembers. Also want to extend prayer for the Terry Graham's family and for you to wrap your arms around them. I ask you these prayers in your name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Graham?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the county employees, department heads, and my fellow councilmembers for their cards of sympathy and their words of support. It has and is a very difficult time for the Graham family and the Stephanie family and the loss of my daughter Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. And you have all of our prayers here. Let's move down to approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second. Have a motion from Ms. McGiff, a second from Mr. Honeycutt. Let's ready to vote on our approval of our agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our agenda this evening. Mr. Marstall, I think you have a couple of new employees you'd like to introduce.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Harper and councilmembers. I'm pleased to introduce in person tonight. There's been some announcements in the media about some key staff positions that we've recruited to Lancaster County. So I'm happy to introduce today. If you'll please stand up first is Mr. Brian Folk. Mr. Brian Folk has started as our Economic Development Director. This is his first day on the job and went through our employee orientation. And he will be leading our economic development efforts along with James Mathis. Well, ask Mr. Folk to come forward just for a second, and he can highlight a little bit of his background, if you would, for us, and introduce yourself.
Sure. Thank you. I'm really excited to be here. I think Lancaster County has some great opportunities for the future. We want to get more than our fair share of the investments that are coming into South Carolina, and I think I can help us get there. I'm a banker and an economic developer as well, so I spent about 15 years overseas in a number of different locations and hope to bring in some of those companies here as well. My last economic development job was at the Greater Richmond Partnership in Richmond, Virginia. Again, it was great to meet you over dinner earlier tonight, and I look forward to being here and getting to know everyone better.
Thank you, Brian. And then the second introduction I want to make tonight, he's been on the job for two weeks, is Mr. Chris Clouden. I'll introduce him, come forward. He has been appointed our interim Parks and Recreation Director, and he certainly hit the ground running as we opened up new facilities, so he gets to walk into a great situation with new facilities and working with staff and get to know our operations. So Chris, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Sure. Good evening, councilmembers. Yes, this is 10, 11, 11th day in the job. Hit the ground running, learning the county, meeting the staff, and a lot of great opportunities, some really good challenges, I think. But with the venues we have and the staff we have, I'm confident that we'll be able to do some really great programming events and tourism opportunities and grow what we have here. And with the regional park coming online as well, there's some really exciting opportunities coming down the road. I am a bit of a mixed bag in my background. I've worked in the sports business for eight years. And before that, I was up in New York City, and I worked for the New York City Parks Department for 10, doing programs, facilities, citywide programs and events up there, had a staff of about 150 people, and ran 14 rec. centers up there as well. So I'm looking forward to getting back into that world and seeing what we can do here to improve the services and the opportunities for the folks in Lancaster County.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations to both of you. And let's move on down to item number five, our special presentation. First, we have a presentation on the solid waste study presented by Mr. Jeff Kato, Director of Public Works, and Mark Schumpert, P.E.K.C.I. Technologies.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. It's great to be here. We're here tonight to report on our Public Works Solid Waste Study. As you know, some time ago, council has funded a solid waste study, which we're going to do in three different phases. It is going to take some time, but we appreciate the support to get this study done because, like all of our other infrastructure and other areas in the county, solid waste is definitely going to be affected by growth and has been affected by growth. So we want to kind of look at where we are and where we're going and where we need to go. That's what we're going to do. So we're going to phase this thing. And in Phase One, we basically are just going back and ask for some professional assistance from Mr. Schumpert and KCI to go over basically just our existing infrastructure, like, you know, where does this, where does stuff go? I mean, it depends on the material, but if you're taking things to our convenience centers, everyone knows Lancaster County, we are without, we do not own or operate our own transfer station or landfill, so we're kind of getting that, all that stuff trucked to the Lancaster City Transfer Station, who then takes it to Republic Services, Lee County Landfill, and Bishopville. So it's a little bit of a unique situation, but again, with the growth of things that are coming, we just want to see how we can enhance this service and do a better job. So Phase One tonight is going to kind of go over that situation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schumpert.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, councilmembers. I am Mark Schumpert with KCI Technologies. I'm the Land Development Practice Leader. I work out of our Rock Hill office and manage the North and South Carolina practices for us. So we're just going to jump right into the slides, and please stop me at any time with any questions. So this is just an overall view of the county. This is just a map, actually, from the county website from Public Works Solid Waste, and we'll zoom in in just a second. But just so you can kind of see, each of those green recycle icons is a convenience center north to south, east to west, throughout the county. And then in the red boxes, I've marked on there for you the location of the Mecklenburg County Foxhole CND Landfill, Construction and Demolition Landfill, there right across the line from Indianland. And then right there in the middle, right there in the city of Lancaster, that's the transfer station that Jeff referred to. And then a little bit further east, that's the Mining Road CND Landfill. So zooming in, this is the list of those convenience centers and their addresses throughout the county. Number one that you see there, that is the Indianland Convenience Center. That's the newest one, the biggest, most modern convenience center. And you could see how close the Foxhole CND Landfill is to that, just up 521 there across the line. Going down on the south there, this is the middle part of the county where the majority of the convenience centers are. You can see the transfer station right there in downtown Lancaster, and then the list previously. So if you've got any questions about any of these sites, we'll be looking at those individually in just a little bit, but just so you can see the proximity to the various landfills. And so, as Jeff was mentioning, when a customer brings their waste to one of these convenience sites, let's say it's some construction demolition material, they have a particular box for it, container, that it's picked up and then it's taken. In the case of these sites, most of them are going to go to the Mining Road Landfill there because they have great rates there, and it's the closest one, whereas somewhere like Indianland, they may take that to Foxhole because it is closer, especially given the price of gas right now. And then these are the convenience centers in the south part of the county. This is just showing you the dates and days of the week and times of operation. This is right off the county website as well for each of those sites. And you can see there that there's a couple of sites that are open just Tuesday. Well, Public Works is not really a convenience center. They do have some, they take brush, but that being aside, McGill is really the only Tuesday, Thursday convenience center. The rest of them are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. In this table, we've put down and marked which sites take which materials. So you've got your, what I don't show there is kitchen waste, your municipal solid waste, because every site takes that, and construction and demolition material, because every site takes that. So these are really more your commodities, your recyclable materials. So every site, again, takes MSW, it takes CND, and then each of the sites also takes these that are with the X in there. So you can see electronics, only Indianland right now takes electronics. Yard brush is taken by most of them.
Why is that? Why is Indianland on one of those electronics?
Because the others are taken at the Public Works site, and it's not a mandate, but it was recommended to us by DHEC when we had to separate out the electronics. They said it's best to centralize that. And then when the new Indianland center was built on, it really had the infrastructure, and we were able to work with our vendor and also have a can placed there.
Also on this table, you'll see how each site is either owned or leased. So if it's owned by the county, we've notated it as such, and if it's leased, we've notated that as well. The two that are maybe a little special, Linwood Drive is actually split with the city, so part of the property is owned by the county and part by the city. And then Heath Springs, it's actually school board owned, but that's still county, and so we put it down as county owned. So this is what, the whole reason we got into this Phase One study was to assess each of the convenience centers, take a look at each one, go to them, meet the attendants, walk the sites, and then put together this assessment. And so this matrix is a functionality scoring. It's weighted. It looks busy, but really, if you look at, if you go across from each site, if it's green, it's in pretty good shape, and as it moves towards red, there's some issues that need to be dealt with. And we weighted it, in the blue there at the bottom, you can see the different weightings, because some things are more important than others. Traffic capacity and site layout being the most important factors that, you know, makes a convenience center usable and safe for customers. And then we weighted some of the others just based on what we feel like in our engineering experience are important issues to deal with. And so what we're going to do, you have this matrix, I believe, in your packets. When we get to the individual site pictures and all, we'll talk through this while we're looking at the sites on the screen. All right. So first site we're going to talk about is Indianland. So in the matrix, you'll see the Indianland there at the top. So we have, you know, lots of different criteria that we assessed. The ones that are weighted have the blue row underneath them. The first two columns, I just want to point out, is we thought it was important to note just how far away are each of these sites from other sites? How far would someone have to drive to get from one site to another, depending on where they live? And interestingly enough, Indianland, being in the most populous part of the county, is the most removed. It's 15 miles from any other convenience center. So that's something to point out as we get into Phase Two and maybe Phase Three down the road. These are things that we're going to take into our assessment for planning. Where should we add or consolidate these convenience centers to make sure the county, the citizens, and the users have the best available facilities as close to them as we can make them? So distance to the next nearest convenience center site is that first column. The next column is, I went on the DOT website and grabbed the daily traffic counts. And so, no surprise, you can see there that Indianland has the highest daily traffic counts, 29,000, almost 30,000. It's the most used, busiest convenience center in the county. A few rows down, you'll see Linwood Drive is the next busiest. No surprise there to pight anyone here. It's a very busy site, close to as busy as Indianland, most likely. And then we get into what we went out and actually scored. We looked at how much land is there for expansion. And so with that, we were thinking, we were looking at, is it owned or is it leased? Because if it's leased, can't really expand that without going through, you know, more leasing contracts. If it's owned, a little bit easier to do that. And then how much of that owned land is even developable? You know, how much is undeveloped right now that we could turn it and expand the convenience center? And everything is ranked on a one to five scale, so if you look down there in the bottom, I put the ranking definitions, one being immediate improvements needed all the way to five, where very functional, no real improvements recommended at this time. So just as you're going through and looking at these numbers, next column over, customer and attendant health safety. So we just, you know, not a heavily weighted criteria, but just based on our experience with convenience centers, are the customers and attendants, is there anything about the site that maybe could be safer, maybe puts them in a position where, like, for instance, at Linwood Drive, the attendant, you know, made a point to tell us that the way the cars come in that gate pretty fast, right off the road there, there's a stopping point at the cans, at the kitchen waste containers. So it can be a little bit, you know, dangerous because how fast cars come in, and they don't have much separation there. So that's the kind of thing we were thinking about with that. Traffic capacity was the next criteria. That's the most heavily weighted one. That was looking at, you know, basically, how can we, how many cars can we stack in these sites? Some of these sites are so small, you can't get but a few cars in there at a time, whereas some of them, you can get, you know, dozens of them. So we looked at traffic capacity and ranked that. Next was site layout. Basically, is the signage, the painting, the overall layout of the site, does it make sense? Is it user-friendly? And then pavement condition, just looking at the asphalt, seeing how much disrepair or how well it's being maintained, what condition it's in. Structures was the next one there. Looked at the fencing. All the sites have chain link fencing around them. What kind of condition were they using? Some of the sites have retaining walls and other, you know, stairs perhaps. So we looked at the condition of those structures. And then lastly, we looked at items accepted based on that table you saw a minute ago. You know, do the sites take most of everything or not as many things? So we ranked that. And then as you move to the right, we summed all that up, we took an average, and then we weighted that with those weighting criteria to get that color-coded ranking for each of those sites. And so you can see here, Linwood Drive and Unity did rank the lowest, whereas Fort and McGill ranked the highest. Part of that is because Fort and McGill are some of the less used ones. They've got less traffic. They just don't have as many issues going on there. They're not, they don't have, they're not worse for wear yet, you might say. And so, so this is going to, all of this will go into our planning. Let me, forgive me, I didn't go through the slides of the pictures as I was talking to you there. So let's look at Indianland for just a second. Indianland, we've got a 3.8 rate of score, a couple of pictures here for you. Couple of things that the attendants pointed out on this site, because it is a big site, it could use a little bit more signage, just because as people come in, there's a lot of room to navigate, a lot of area. And so some more signage, just to help people direct them, know where to go with the kind of waste that they've got to drop off. I know also that there has been some criminal activity, some, I believe, theft or two has occurred here. And I know, I think one that, the day I was out there, one of the sheriff's deputies was out there actually looking around, because there had recently been something taken, I believe, from maybe the attendance shack or something. So that's, you know, those kinds of things we look at when we're rating these. Next one is Tradesville. So Tradesville was ranked as a 3.2, so about middle of the pack. You know, decent site. Issues here were just the availability of land, really, and the pavement condition were the biggest, were the biggest issues at this site. So a couple of pictures of that one. If you have any questions about any particular site, feel free to stop me. Irwin Farm, this is one of the sites where we've looked at as, you know, as we think about consolidating down the road, this is a site with a good bit of land, so it ranked well on the available land for expansion. 3.4 overall score, a little bit better than middle of the pack. A few pictures of that site. Kershaw, so Kershaw site, 2.6, so a little bit below average. Payment was a big issue here. This one, the asphalt needs to be addressed soon, and some of the site layout we thought could be improved. Fort Convenience Center, so Fort, not much land here. It's a 4.0, so it ranked really well because it's in great shape. It's, I don't know how new this one is, but it's in really good shape, not heavily used, but overall in pretty good shape. Then Linwood Drive, I think everyone's probably familiar with this site, 2.3, just one decimal above Unity there. So Linwood Drive, we, I think we're familiar with issues at this site. It's heavily used, it's in a congested area. You know, one of the biggest issues is that folks that want to bring in kitchen waste, they can come in to do that, but if they got CND waste, they can't do it on the same trip. They've actually got to leave, circle around, come back through just because of the room that was available there. They can't do those at the same visit without actually backing up and maybe creating an unsafe condition to go up on the ramp for the CND. So it's issues like that that makes Linwood a great candidate for perhaps being replaced by a bigger, newer facility. Race Track, that's the least facility out by the racetrack, unique name. So this one, not much land available, ranked 2.2, let me go back here, 3.2. Main thing was the land available and the lease that we're dealing with on that site. Pictures there. All right, McGill, all the way down in the southernmost part of the county there, ranked 4.0. Again, it's not a heavily used site. There is a good bit of land there, so, and it is owned, but interestingly, McGill's the other, this is a, actually has a permitted landfill for LCID material, land clearing debris. So it's got the landfill permit, and it has a composting permit, and it's a convenience center. So three different activities being dealt with at this site. A few pictures there. Just recently, we need the composting permit for this site. And then Unity, this was the lowest scored site, 2.2. Not much land available there, and just overall condition, traffic capacity, a lot of site layout issues with this one. A few pictures for you here. Very tight site, very small. Could not, would not be able to handle a lot of customers at one time. Midway, Midway is 3.7, so it got up into the grain there, and pretty much, you know, above average site, decent amount of land, not as much as some of the ones that we want to maybe look at for consolidating or expansion, but not a bad site. Couple of pictures there. Rich Hill, so Rich Hill's the 3.2, middle of the pack. Site layout was the lowest score criteria at this site. And last but not least, Heath Springs. Heath Springs, 3.0. And about middle of the pack, this one, paving and structures, I think some of the retaining walls. This one at Indianland, Indianland had some retaining walls that had a little bit of damage to them, some of the concrete, and I think this one did too, some of the smaller ramp walls. But site layout, I think, was the biggest issue with this one. A few pictures for you here. Before I transition into demographics, any questions about the site assessments that we did?
Yeah, I'm curious about which one of these sites do you consider to be the worst one we've got in the county that we need to look at more closely? I know there's probably more than one, but which is the worst one?
From my staff perspective and what Mark has ranked on the matrix, it's right there with it, too. I would say Linwood Drive is the worst one.
That's a real bomb right there.
We're going to talk about that a little bit here in just a few minutes.
Okay, so, as you know, Lancaster County is growing, much like everywhere else around here. And these are just some numbers that we pulled. So the table on the left actually came out of the solid waste management plan that Jeff and his group produced. And then on the right is the state's projections for population growth. So right now, we're probably sitting at 100, 105,000. They project by 2035, you'll be over 150,000. So earlier, I was mentioning Indianland. Indianland is, you know, if you go by zip code, it's about 6% of the land area in Lancaster County. Indianland is 6% of the land area, but it has about 35% of the population. So over a third of your citizens live in 6% of the land area of the county. And so the population there is about 35,000 and is expected to go over 50,000 in the next 10 years. So that's the, so just the demographics to bring up, you know, basically, the point of this is, the county's growing. We are, just bring out a couple of things real quick. Over the next decade, county population expected to grow about 50% or about 50,000 more people. And one other number I want to give to you. So if we take out Indianland's population, the remaining 69,000 county residents, they split the use of their time, so again, think about the future, planning for the consolidations for the expansions. There's about 6,000 to 7,000 citizens using each of the 11 sites when we take Indianland out of the equation. So basically, as a planning tool, we know it's not really that. We know more users use, you know, Linwood and some of the other sites, but it helps to know how many residents do we need to serve over the next 10, 20 years when we start planning, how we're going to consolidate and lay out new convenience centers or expand existing ones. So that's what, that's what the demographics is for. Any questions about that?
You know, Indianland has a lot of developments that have their own waste collection services. So how do you weight all that in? And also, I would suspect that all the growth, not all the growth, I would say the majority of growth in Lancaster County is going to be north of Lancaster City. I mean, that's, that's what, but, so do you weight that in to your long range plan?
So you're asking about the vendor contracts that they have?
Yeah, and also, where you're going to plan for these sites, and I know that in the development agreements, there's a $500 fee now being put in for solid waste. I mean, I assume you knew about that?
Yeah. So when we, so thinking, so the table on the left, what this one gives you from the management plan is the projection of Class II and Class III waste as we, you know, go into the, in the upcoming decades. And so Class II being your kitchen waste, or excuse me, your CND, construction demolition, Class III being your kitchen waste, municipal solid waste. So you can see the numbers there, how they're trending upwards, what they're expected to be. I don't know necessarily if those take, I don't know if curbside is factored into that, but I can tell you that anything that goes to Republic's landfill in Lee County, we're looking at.
Okay.
Goes to the city transfer station, and if Jeff gets a bill for it, we're looking at it.
And too, with the curbside at Public Works, we still get a lot of calls, and the curbside folks are Lancaster County residents, so they, there's no charge for them to use any convenience site in the county. So a lot of things, the curbside may not pick up, so they, we direct them, they come to the convenience sites as well. So why not be as many people, the curbside is helping some of the traffic, but it's still, it's still open and still stays very busy from, you know, some of the folks that also have a curbside service.
There's also a lot of construction in the Indianland area, and I suspect some of the contractors are using the conventions.
That's something we try to keep an eye on there.
And in our, in our assessments with the attendants, you know, we did discuss that and how difficult it is, if they, are they able to, you know, find some of that? They check license plates, and they do. They talk, if somebody comes in with five commodes, they're going to ask them, did it come from your house? And, you know, of course, they're cleaning out mom's basement usually, but, but yeah, they are, they are talking to users about those things. So what we've got here next is, we did some traffic counts. So we have a mobile vehicle counter that we can go out and set up. It works off of a laser. It's not like a tube across the ground like you may have seen. And so just to give us an idea, to back up that data that's in that matrix with the DOT traffic counts, this more or less just backs that up, that, okay, Indianland, on this particular Saturday on July 10th, 453 cars came into the site and used it. These numbers are not perfect because the counter, if somebody comes in and comes out, you know, in the same lane, we have to take that into the equation and pull that out. But you can see between a Monday, which, of course, after being closed on Sunday, Mondays are busy days and Saturdays are busy days, especially Saturdays. So, you know, So, you know, taking over the course of a year, you can see how many users would, would be coming through here, but four hundred and fifty, so that's Indian Land. You look at somewhere like Irwin Farm, again, good site, big site, one we want to look at for maybe future growth, three hundred on a Saturday. So Linwood Drive, three hundred and fifty, and that was, I'm guessing that was, maybe not, that wasn't the business of Saturdays if I had to guess, but still a, a little less than Indian Land. And then you look at somewhere like Rich Hill, two forty. So you can see a factor of two between some of the slower sites and some of the busier sites. And so that's just some numbers we wanted to show you, that we're, we're out there, we're trying to get as much data as we can to inform our decisions and the planning that's going to be coming later for this. And then we get to go into the concept?
Yes, also too, as we close this up, again, this was, this was just an update, and again, we plan to consolidate all this data and come back with a, a master plan, so to speak, of what to do. And in the meanwhile too, we are using, you know, what we can, I think, an example too, Rich Hill and Fort maybe ranked a little higher because we were able to do some resurfacing work in those sites to make that pavement condition better, which we will do again this year with the, the budgeted money we're allotted. But you have to be careful with that because pavement in those sites, we still have to bring our refuse trucks in there, so we have to be very careful. Could be just patching, you know, or things of that nature, but pavement condition is one. But, you know, in, in saying that, we know there'll be a plan to consolidate hopefully for more sites, this side and the other, but our concern, you know, kind of front-running this thing is the Linwood Drive site. It, it is by far, in our opinion, the, the one that needs the most attention. So if there were any, any way to expedite something with that, we would certainly love some, some input and direction on that. And with that being said, I know a while back, we had talked about a, a property that was housed the Lancaster County Water and Sewer District. So what we had Mark do is just for a concept, we didn't spend a lot of time, even though we have a phase one environmental study. We, we drew up a couple of concepts there because I think, you know, even as far back as a couple of years ago, we talked about possibly if the county obtained that site, could a, could a convenience site go there? We think the answer is yes, obviously there would be more work to do, you know, rezoning the property, some road improvements, things of that nature. So we couldn't snap our, while we can't snap our fingers and replace Linwood Drive, we think if, if we can get to work on this or have some direction in what to do with that, the Water and Sewer District property does, you know, kind of, kind of fall into the realm of something that could happen because like I said, to replace that site, I, I'm not going to turn down anything, but it is, it is difficult to find land right now, to procure and purchase land, as well as to rezone it, which even this property would need to be, you know, rezoned. So we, we kind of got a concept in mind for that, and again, we just wanted to present that as we were closing out our presentation.
So this is the first concept we came up with. So, you know, the, the actual Water and Sewer District property is much bigger than what you see here, but what we looked at is just the, the land on this side of the reservoir along the, the highway there, about four to five acres that we're looking at here. And so in this concept, what we did is we looked at coming in, there's a, an old driveway with a gate there on the far right of your drawing. It's not in use now, must have been at some point in the past, but that is a big hillside where Water and Sewer District has put materials over the years. And so it's about twenty foot higher on the right side of the drawing as the left side down there where the maintenance building and that shed are. But what, because what we did is we basically said, okay, let's just look at what Indian Land has, and we said, if we could take and put a retaining wall in, so the concept, the way this works is that right side driveway, your roll-off trucks would come in, use that to pick up the, the dumpsters, the, the roll-off cans that are lined up there behind that wall. And then the driveway you see making that loop would be your, your users. And so you could put any number of different facilities within that and around that to allow for drop-offs and whatnot. But what we did is we took a, a eight-foot retaining wall and put it down that site, using the topography, the existing topography of the site to help us to easily cut that out and put this in. As Jeff mentioned, this, this site is owned to open space preservation right now, which is not, you know, does not allow for recycling facilities. We would have to rezone it to light industrial, heavy industrial, rural business, or institutional to be able to have that use now. Then the other concept, so in this concept, we're, we're saving the, the old maintenance building and the shed for use for county maintenance uses or whatever they may want to use those for, so you could basically have two different uses on this site, with the driveway to your left being preserved for, or reserved for the use by those, those users. With this concept, we decided to look at using both driveways to separate the roll-off container trucks, so the, the right driveway would be just the trucks picking up the containers, picking up the waste there. The left driveway would be customers, and so here you, you demolish the maintenance building and shed there and then, or maybe you keep some part of them, maybe the sheds kept, that's where you put your cooking oil and your grease collections and things like that, they have to be under a roof anyway. And so you, you're able to use that roof, but the maintenance building probably goes away and, and we put other types of collection activities in that area. But these are just the two concepts that we've, we've come up with so far. With this one, what we avoid is getting into, well, maybe, it is conceptual, but maybe we stay out of that big mound of material that they use basically to dump a lot of, I guess, land clearing and inert type debris, concrete and other rubble, maybe old asphalt, whatever, Water and Sewer District had to get rid of maybe, old pipe material, but it's in there, it's twenty-plus feet high. And so maybe we want to stay out of that, that's, that's a consideration with this layout. So with that, we'll open it up for you, any other questions you may have?
Yeah, I got, I got one about the old Lancaster County Water and Sewer. Are, are we pursuing that property so that we can put the Linwood Drive site over there? We still talking about that?
Yes, we've had conversations and they allowed us to have access to the property to do the environmental, and so we have had good discussions with them.
Good, good.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Jeff, a while back, we had, this, this had come to us and all, and I'd, I'd made the comment about the landfill over there. We had, I've got a lot of Lancaster County-owned land there that, that would be suitable for a good site, and that's not how to spend no money. It's good level property. Was that ever pursued or whatever?
Actually, good question there because when, when we were actually looking into this site, that, I remember that conversation and stuff as well too. So Mark has wrote over and looked at that, at that property as well, so I'll let him comment on that.
Yeah, so I did drive through and, yeah, the front end of that site looks very feasible for something like this. Now, not knowing what's under the ground, not knowing the extents of where waste is, where the footprint, you know, starts and stops, but, you know, as you come in the gate there, you know, that, the first two tracts of land that I saw before you get back there where, that day they were actually mowing back there, where I think most of the waste probably is. If there's nothing that we have to stay out of there in that, that front acres, the front forty, then yes, I, from what I can see, it does look like something we should at least consider. And more research being, you know, be done, you know, get the old permits, find out what was buried where, where can we work, that kind of thing. Make sure there's no environmental concerns in that, you know, what I call the front forty. I think the back forty maybe is where most of the waste is, is that right?
The back forty is pretty, you know, it's, it's under, still under our closure, we're, we're winding that down, but that front forty, that, that I think we were talking about before, again, we've kind of kept that in, in reserve in case of a, you know, God forbid, a FEMA disaster or something, that, that would be a holding area for, for material.
The, the location here, the whole Lancaster County Water and Sewer is, is less than a mile from the other site, probably not a half mile. And if, I didn't realize that site was that busy, sixteen thousand. I knew it was a lot of, lot of traffic, but that, that, that is the best location because I think if we go down to the south, you know, if you probably drew a circle around where people are coming from, you get, you, you would probably get a lot of traffic, of trash out of the city, but that whole corridor within three or four miles of there, I think, is pretty populated, and that's a centralized location. If, I'm scared if we get to one end of that, one end or the other, we're going to end up with a lot of people taking their trash and dumping it in other places if they have to go six and seven miles.
Dennis, what was the cost of that, this place?
For the Water and Sewer site, an initial appraisal, if I remember correctly, was like four hundred and eighty-five thousand. I think four eighty-five, if I remember correctly. That was from two years ago.
Well, to be honest with you guys, that's a lot of money to pay to put a, put a waste site. I, I really, I can't support that. Not when we got property, and I'm sure there's other property that don't like that, and I'm sure we've got some other property that, that, these buildings are in pretty bad shape here, they're not going to be reusable for anything. They're, they're really, some of them are in pretty bad shape. But you might store tractors or something like that in it, but, but it's not nothing that, I don't know, do we need to spend four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars when we might could go somewhere else in the district or in that area and, and get something for a hundred thousand? I mean, we, we don't, I just can't see spending that much money when we got the property they said would work down there. All these landfill sites, everybody travels. Indian Land, they travel from eight to ten miles from one end to the other to get to theirs, and people at Rich Hill and all the others, I mean, it ain't convenient for everybody, it's just according where you live, but some people it's going to be real convenient for, so I mean, we, we got to look at what that would be best, you know, for me, cost-wise. That's, that's my opinion, I mean, I have to y'all.
Those are things, those are considerations we're going to be looking at.
What was the cost of the Indian Land? Wasn't like a million dollars or something, just to do, not for the land, but just for the, that type of convenience center, Jeff?
When we got finished, yes, it was, the site work and actual building of the site itself was, you know, around seven hundred thousand, but we were able to value engineer some of that, you know, we, all the work stood to rough grading at that site, is to knock down that price, but the original price was around a hundred dollars.
And probably that cost is, would be higher, and I'm just thinking about the overall cost of the Linwood one, that's all.
Was that the land too, seven hundred thousand, that was just basic? That wasn't the land?
That was just to build that site.
That was just to build, that was just a site.
Jeff, with Roslin coming on board in the next little while, with their athletic complex coming over that area, and for me, I see future growth in the Riverside area. Do we have a spot over there that we might be considering for a land, not, not a landfill, convenience site, because it's definitely going to be needed?
That too, coming since we finally got this study started, that was, that was a issue that came up that we, we want to start working on as well, because that's going to, the closest site to that one will be the, the racetrack site, which again, is a, is a lease site. So, you know, that, that site will get busier as the development comes around.
Yeah. I'd say in the next ten years, we'll see tremendous growth in that area. That's my prediction.
All right, any more questions right now?
You said you're going to come back at some point and give us an update, or what's this, what's the, what's the, what's the timeframe, what are we, what are we looking at?
We would like to hear a little more if we need to, you know, further, this is, like I said, we have this concept here, we can, we could work more at, at pinpointing that down. I, I just don't know if we're going to purchase that property or not, but again, we will be assessing everything and we have a whole nother phase with, you know, financials and all to bring back and come into. This is, this solid waste is different than just throwing something away and having it picked up. There are a lot of layers to it, there's a, you know, a whole nother, you know, recycling part of it that we haven't even touched yet with our grants and such, but it, it would be nice to, you know, to know moving forward, whether it be through our budget or however we could do. I really think that Linwood Drive site needs, we need to put that on the radar as a priority. I'm not, you know, pushing that this, but if we, if we knew where we could build another one, we would definitely start working hard.
So you're looking for direction from council where to build it?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's what I want, that's really what I wanted to get to. The ball's in our court.
Well, and there are a couple of issues. One is the Linwood site, where the flavor is for moving forward to explore this some more, because as I said, we do have some opportunity with the Water and Sewer District to do some more work on that land, but also, as he highlighted, we have some properties that we own, but there are also some of the convenience site leases. If the opportunity comes up to purchase those leased sites, is that a priority for council as we think about that and expansion too? But I think to answer your question, Councilmember Graham, I think within six months, we'll be back with our phase two information, that we can be back before you on, talking about recycling and other things, but the Linwood, we will keep bringing back on some other meeting agendas.
Yeah, I mean, the Linwood, I would think is a priority and the council needs to give them, give clear direction, and I, I don't have an opinion at this time.
All right, any, any more comments? All right, we appreciate it, thank you. All right, let's go on to our second special presentation, our regional park design update presentations by Carl Arm, Arm, Armenia, Senior Landscape Architect with Walpert, and Andrew Pack, Vice President, Director of Building Sector Public Market with Walpert. Go ahead, how you doing?
Councilman Harper, Chair and Councilmembers, pleasure to be here again in front of you to present some findings of our master plan and some of the plan development. In the agenda tonight, what we're going to do is kind of give a, a quick recap. We're going to kind of walk through some of the, the previous information that we've discussed and brought forth to this council on August eighth, and even a, a presentation even before then. And then we're going to get into what we're recommending as the plan development for the, the regional park. We're going to kind of highlight a little bit about what we're seeing as a phase one of that park, and then we're going to also show some other, different options from even looking at a, a rec center component that could always be added near the future, and we're also looking at some additional property that, that also could be looked at as far as in the future to purchase, to, to continue to just add to this, a, a great amendee for the, the community. And then we'll just talk a little bit about the project schedule, where we go from here, the next steps, and then we'll open up some questions at the end of the presentation. Again, my name is Andrew Pack, I'm the project director of this project, and again, with me is Carl Armagnini. Carl's got forty years' experience doing parks, and I've got thirty-three years doing parks in, in the Carolinas and throughout the, the nation. We're very, again, excited to be here this evening to, to present this plan to this council and this community. Again, recap, just going through the process. If you recall, we started early spring, we called that our discovery and assessment, that's when we were doing our research, we walked the site, we did some due diligence, you know, just really trying to understand the eighty-four acres that we were looking at. We started with some of the public drop-in meetings, we did surveys, and we started gathering all this information as far as the needs, kind of led us to some of this conceptual design that you saw last time, some of the FIT studies, as we are calling them, and then we met with staff and kind of refined those and, and bringing forth to you this evening, the preliminary or the, the recommended master plan development, get some input for that. So you can see we're at the end there, it's very hard to see on that slide there, but we're, we're at the end of this, this phase of this process as far as getting input and moving forward with that phase one. Again, the site and location, as part of the new development of the Roslin development, you can see that on the map on the left, we're just directly located right below the state line right there where South Carolina, North Carolina breaks, breaks off to their, to the right, and part of the, the northern panhandle of, of, again, a lot of the fund development that, again, the county's having to deal with there just to, to, to south of Mecklenburg County in York. Yeah, we use five to six different methods to gain these needs assessment. We always say it's kind of like a funnel, we're taking a lot of these different type of input methods from looking at the online survey, we had, also had the public workshops, we looked at park standards, and we also looked at your 2040s. at your 2040 survey. There's a lot of good information about open space, and a lot of things about connectivity as far as greenway trails, open space, and even parks recreation. So we gathered all that, and that's what we presented to you in more detail at our last, on, on August 8th. So we gathered all that information. We've gone to the advisory board. Again, we gained input from, from this council and really tried to look at what's those programming, what, what surfaced to the top, so to speak, as far as the priorities of the programming. Because we always say programming drives facilities. So we got to really understand with that programming, how that's going to meet the needs only currently, but how we can plan for that over the near future. How can we be flexible with some of that spaces as well to allow for the adaptable programming as, as, as years come by, as the park begins to get fully developed. So this is a list of what we've, the big, big items that we're looking at. Again, we've kind of broken these down from active and passive recreation, and also the indoor recreation. You can see there to the left, we're looking at multi-use pitch fields. We're looking around three to four fields. And it's going to be supported with restroom, concessions, and also looking at overlay of the U-10 with these, as, as more of the youth fields. Baseball, softball field complex, we're looking at three to four fields. And one of those fields, we're looking at the USCL baseball field that's, that's going to be part of this plan. And we know that there's some funding that's, that's forthcoming for that. So we've been looking at some, some different ideas for that. There's something, Sumter has a really nice facility that, that staff really liked. So we were kind of looking at that a little bit as a model, particularly as it relates to some of the spectator viewing for that facility. Look at it, storage and maintenance, obviously, that's going to support this, this facility. Looking at parking, looking at overflow parking as well. And so that's some of the big, big areas it takes up. It's almost like a puzzle. So those are your big, big areas. It's going to really take up the big spaces on the, on the property. Then some of the passive recreation, that's just as important. We've got to have a balance. So we always like to look at, you know, what, what is, what's the non-soccer moms and dads and things that are going to, what are they going to do? And then what's going to support these active recreation as well? So it's kind of a complete, really, full, full use park. So we got pavilion shelters. It'd be supported, obviously, with picnic areas, themed splash pad. We heard that loud and clear on August 8th from, from this council. Themed playgrounds. And then we'll have those incorporated throughout the, the site itself. A small outdoor amphitheater. And you'll see that in the plan. It's going to be, we've got a very, really nice natural area for that, where that could fit. And then we're also looking at a public indoor meeting event center. And again, we've, we heard that that community building was also very important to this council. So we, we've got that on the plan as well. And of course, multi-use trails. We're looking at walking, you know, nature interpretive type of trails, even cross-country. Anytime you have big pitch fields, we're, we're looking at a 3K course that could be easily meandering throughout this, this site. Looking at biking. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, it's going to be really big for us to, to look at this regional trail connection, because we've got a lot of opportunities in the future for other growth or commercial growth, particularly along the 521 corridor. Not going to go in great depth, this is some of the maps that we presented several times before this council. Again, just looking at the property, currently it's an undeveloped property. You can see all the green. That's a lot of pine. So again, it's, we can easily, those pine trees are really, is, is one of the areas that we're looking at for the heavy development. And you can see along the top there, that yellow line, it's also, is where the creek is. It's a beautiful corridor. And so that's beautiful hardwood trees, a lot, a little bit slope in that area. So we're kind of keeping that for the passive area. And you'll see that in the plan I hear in a few minutes. And this is just another map, just showing some of that, you can see in that green map, that's a, a really, not a unique, it's just a bottom area as far as the, not so much a flood plain, but just more of a, a lower creek corridor. And it's just really beautiful with a lot of the hardwoods, a lot of wildlife. And this, this map here is very similar to what we just showed earlier, but you can see how this park is wrapped with all the residential. So again, you know, this is a park for the county. But you could see that we're also looking at property that commercial, that area to the, the right there. How can we connect that? Again, you've, you've heard a little bit about like tourism, and, and we, again, we don't have that plan per se, what that's going to be, but we know that that connection's going to be critical as far as how we can maneuver pedestrians back and forth. And then also to the north, I know that the, last time we presented a potential for that 20-acre parcel to look at, what, how can we develop that? So that's what this map is just really showing in context what's around this 84 acres. We presented some of the FIT studies. What we did after the meeting, we came back, we started looking at the grading, the topography, because these big areas, you can see the baseball, the, the soccer pitches, or the, the pitches themselves, they take up a lot of room. And so the grading is going to be really critical. It's like, how can we grade those on this particular property? And so that's a, a quick study there to the right as far as how we started looking at the cut and fill. How can the site, how can these grades work in the, to the existing topography? So that helped us make some recommendations as far as like, how, what can fit on this site. And so that's what led us to the, the, the refined master plan. So this is that refined master plan. You can see it's very similar to the two FIT studies that we presented previously. You can see there to the bottom along Roslin, that number one, that's our park entrance coming off of Roslin Avenue. And that road, if you take it up through there, you can see how it's just meandering all the way up to, you can see 11 and 12. And from that, we're basically are allowing parking to occur and easy access to get out, you know, to get the car parked as fast as you can, and then get into the amenities. I mean, that's really critical to try to not drive throughout the whole site. So how can you organize any type of park where you have the least amount of conflicts between cars and pedestrians? So you can see that we've organized the large baseball field, the, the USCL baseball field there to the left of that complex. That's an optimal field location. You can see that, that's, it's going to be really easy access right off of the parking. You're also going to be able to really see that as you come into the road as well. To the left is the community center, the public indoor facility or event center that we're calling it, about 15,000 acre square feet. And then it's supported by some pickleball and some basketball, some amenities there to the left. It's easily served and programmed out of that rec center. And then number five, we were hearing about solid waste, just the earlier presentation, maintenance. Where does all that occur? That's a really critical on any type of large regional park. So we've kind of tucked that away the best we can there to the left, again, for county vehicles, maintenance staff to try to not drive through the whole park, again, trying to minimize that, that conflict. As you come around, you can see that the six and seven and eight, that's our passive, one of our passive recreation areas. Seven is the playground or what we're calling the themed splash pad. So that's going to be supported with the restroom and passive and picnecking. And you can also see from that area, we've got some really nice network of trails that's going to be able to meander not only throughout the property or the park property, but also great connection back to some future regional trails or connectivity to the neighborhood. As you come around, you can see items 10 and nine, that's the multi-use field complex, and it's also being supported by another restroom concession facility. And then to the north, right there, 11 and 12, 11 is that small amphitheater, as I was mentioning earlier. And it's also supported with a small picnic area, playground. There to the left, it's also going to help support some of that softball and baseball complex for all the different kids that, that may be coming there, siblings. But it's also used, you know, even if there's no ballgames or anything that's going on. So a park has to act as, you've got parks within the park. And so we've tried to design all these amenities to support, you know, all day long type of events for the county to really enjoy. And then lastly, just really the networking of trails, all the different trails that we mentioned earlier, all the multi-use trails, really blending and meandering and going through that, like those creek areas. And you can see on this map where we've got some connectivity, not only back to the residential, but also for these regional connections. And you can see the, the one there to the right, we're calling that a very strong paved greenway trail that would eventually go to the proposed commercial areas, is that the earlier map that we showed that was in the red. And then when we look at parking, obviously, that was something that we wanted to share tonight. You know, the, looking at this site, you've got 84 acres, so we have room, you know, to, to ensure that we've got enough parking for all these amenities. Just looking at the mark spaces that we've got on this particular plan, we're looking at, you know, roughly 900 plus. And what that equals to is roughly about 90 cars per field. And that's looking at 10 fields. And how we came up with that is if you look at the, the pitch fields there to the right, we're looking at two youth fields, U-10s, per field, so that's six. And then you would have the four baseball fields. So that's how we came up with the 10. Because in this scenario, we're also looking at overflow parking that would be used for the, the lower soccer field, which would again yield, you know, roughly about 1,100 spaces when you start adding up the max of spaces on this site. So that's, that roughly about 115 to 116 spaces per field. So well, well above what Carl and I've been designing for many years, and even in this region, as far as adequate amount of parking. So we, we know that we can get a significant amount of parking for this regional park. And then as I mentioned, we've looked at some other options that we wanted just to bring to the council for just consideration. This area located in the, the black dashed area is the rec center. This is looking at a larger rec center, roughly about 50,000 square feet, that you're looking at indoor running track, possibly indoor pickleball, basketball gyms, a lot of meeting facilities, even any type of programming that the county may have, whether parks and recreation programming or any type of joint use programming for this region of, of the county. So we've located it in that location. One, it's a great for the topography. When you're looking at these large volumes, we're able to really build that into that slope. And that's going to save some significant amount of money. So we basically took that community building, it was up at the front, and we've carried it and we've moved it into the back. So you can imagine even some of those, the walking track running along and having that glass and really looking over those trees, that would be a really beautiful experience for the user I use in that building. And then lastly, we wanted to show, as far as an option, looking at the 20-acre property that was to the north. You can see on this map, what we're showing is knowing additional trails and, and regional trail connection there to the north, but also looking at really, really nice disc golf course. That is very conducive to something that can be built on that property and be easily worked in to get a nice 18-hole course that would, you know, the trailhead parking for that would obviously would be at the end there where the 11 is, where the one and 18 would, would wrap right back to itself. So really good use for that property. There's, the topography, the access is, is a little tough to get to. Not to say you couldn't get vehicular access over there, but it's, it would be extremely expensive to maneuver a trail, I mean, a vehicular road there. But we felt like that this was a really good use. Good use buffer, again, open space. It's a great use for that piece of property. And then as far as recommendation on Phase One, we're looking at the area here also dashed. We're looking at the, the baseball softball complex. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we've got some funding that's from the USCL baseball field that would be forthcoming. So also, this is, when you look at any type of grading activity, this is our high point of the site. So we'd have to great, take this cut, so to speak, and use it for where our pitch fields are, where number nine's located. So we've got to, you know, balance, somewhat balance this site the best that we can. So this would be the first activity that you would have to do anyway. So we're recommending that you get the, the park road coming in, you get the adequate amount of parking. We would have some support amenities with that, with some of the, the playground, pavilion up there in number 12. And again, portion of number five with the maintenance is going to be very critical. And then we would have to see how much we would, could do of that particular building, built out of that spectator areas I mentioned earlier. So again, we're looking about eight to nine million for, for the Phase One for that. Now, again, that's probably not going to build out that building and all those, the elements on that building, but we could look at really, how can that money be well-used as far as that, that development that we're showing there? And schedule, again, this is what we, that's where we are now. Again, moving forward, we're looking at running into the next design phase of this, which would be the schematic design, the design development, construction documents, and getting it out for bid. And we're looking at this schedule, about this time next year, we would hopefully be in construction with this project. So outside of doing permitting and things like that, if there's any delays, this is a, a, a good schedule for us to at least target, to try to look at that Phase One that we identified. And with that, we're going to open up any questions. And then this is some things that takeaways, questions that we've got for council is, you know, just thoughts on what we presented as Phase One and the budget? Thoughts on the optional, you know, rec center? Do we, is that something we can plan for in the future? Looking at the, also thoughts on the additional property and maybe any other amenities that you, you may think that we're missing on this wonderful park?
Well, here, Mr. McGriff.
This was a lot of information to digest, but I liked a lot of what you presented. I noticed that you put in the public indoor meeting event center like that. Now, when we got down to the optional pieces, when you get down to the master plan, potential Page One development, can I explain that again, that part?
What we're, what, for the, for the amount of money that we're looking at for the Phase One, we're looking at about eight to nine million dollars for...
And that will include the ones that are highlighted?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, right, right. That, what's that? So we're not getting the full park. The full park build out, you know, you're looking at, you know, roughly plus or minus $30 million for the, the build out of the whole park.
Now, those other pieces you mentioned, the rec center and some other pieces, that's an additional cost, right?
Yes, correct.
So at any point when you introduce these options, will it have a price with it?
We can, we can, yes, we've got a price for that. I mean, roughly, we shared with staff. Again, these are just numbers, but we just completed doing a design for a 50,000 rec center just right up the street in Concord. And it was roughly about 20, 25 million dollars. It's, but it's 50,000 square feet.
Every time we add some optional, we need to know what it's going to cost.
Yes, yes.
I guess we first need to know how mu, how much we'll be able to borrow for this. That's where, where, that's why we need...
Great, great question. I, I think what we wanted to present... I think what we wanted to present this evening is those are some new options that we have not presented before. So yes, if you, definitely, we can bring back some more data on that. We just wanted to see if that's something that we wanted to explore a little bit more.
Everything looks good, but everything, it costs us, every time you add one more piece, that's additional money. So we definitely got to look at that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Cornes.
I got a question for our finance people over there. How much money do we currently have and what's the collection rate? And number two, while you're thinking about that, we could always name that new recreation center, the Lenora Center, and I'm sure Lenora would kick in a good donation for that.
A few million.
You want me to tell you first how much we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We currently have 7.2 million. And currently, we're averaging about 2 million, 2 million.
And highlight that that 7.2...
The 7.2 is what we have on hand.
And then two, two...
And we're averaging about 2 million right now.
That was after the land was paid for.
Two million per year?
Yes.
But that's all through the, what fund?
Hospitality fund, correct.
So I think at this point, as far as financing goes, we were planning on bonding some portion of this against our revenue stream. So we need, we need to update on what's the number there before we start our want list.
Absolutely.
Because then we got an additional, I think, 750,000 from the state to upgrade. When you get into schematics, and I know you'll start telling us what those upgrades will be, but I'm excited for where we're at and what we're going to be able to actually build.
I got it.
Go ahead, Mr. Mostella.
I love the design. Y'all have done a great job. Everything like it flows real good. I got three things that's essential, regardless of whichever design we do. One is parking. Number two is parking. Number three is parking. We got to have plenty of that. We didn't see problems with other things we've built with parking, and we have. When you have USCL using a field up there and have a large crowd, you've got all those ball fields playing, you've got all those soccer fields playing, there's tournaments on the weekend, bringing lots of people. Then you've got the people coming in using the amenities and stuff. So it's going to take a lot of parking. All of it, every day ain't going to be overflowing, but weekends are going to be really heavy. So we need to make sure if we got another place that you can put some more asphalt to put some more parking that you ain't using, let's put some more parking in there if we could for overflow. I appreciate that, but y'all doing a great job. You really are. I like it.
Parking, parking, I like it.
That's right.
When I saw that you had dropped the shooting range, you sold me.
Mr. Blackman.
Yeah, as we talk about the, moving into the construction phase, have you talked to Lenora about when they will have their road access ready for you to be able to go in there with construction activity?
Yeah, well, they've, there's access now.
Do you mind if Mr. Hardy comes up? He wanted to, because they, they own the additional 20 acres behind the 80 acres. Mr. Hardy?
Good evening, y'all. And I talked to Administrator Marstall, and we have an interest, if you have an interest in purchasing that or somehow obtaining that from Lenora, we can work on that. I've talked to higher-ups, and that's an option that we can, we can work on. And we may even be able to find you some accessibility between that cul-de-sac that's there. And I have somewhat a relationship with the two ladies that own the parcel further to the north off of North Corner. They're in Colorado that, you know, maybe we could talk to them on your behalf, on the county's behalf. I'd be happy to do that. The other thing is that access to the commercial, which I think is a fabulous idea, and I'm sure the Norman family would think so as well. Warren and David Norman are currently, they're beginning the planning process of that commercial property. They've been working with the planning department a little bit here. So I'm sure now would be a good time to talk to them about that accessibility. And then I really would like to volunteer my time to help coordinate, if you're going to need, if you're going to do the big center, you'll need sewer. So I want to make sure that we work with my team now, since a lot of that is run already. You know, the, inside the community sewer is run already. The new six miles we have to run, we're just starting. So, excuse me, we want to get sewer to your site, you know, good accessibility. So please, I'll give you a business card. Call me, and we'll get that taken care of. So we want to work as much as we can with the group, and this is fabulous.
Mr. Hardy? I was cut off from my questioning. My point I was getting to about the road access and everything was that if we got this park going and you guys weren't ready, you know, are we going to have our citizens drive through a dirt road to get there? Are you coordinating, can we coordinate? Will it be doable, viable? Have y'all thought about that, that your road will be finished in order to access our place?
Yes. Our road is built already.
Paved?
It's paved, it's paved. It's beautiful. And you'll, a little later in the session tonight, we're going to talk about the bonds being floated for Roseland. Of that bond amount tonight, we have to give 4% of those gross proceeds, I'm sure Mr. DeBose will bring it up, we have to give 4% of those gross proceeds. So that would be about $600,000 that you all have to spend within the district, and this park is part of that district. So there's additional money. The roads are in. I wish I would have got, I just received some aerial shots today, or else I would have been able to put them up for you. The second reading, I'll be able to. You'll see the entire site. The road is almost finished all the way to Old Hickory. So I'm a little over a mile all the way back. I drove it on last Thursday, but the last 600 feet, I had to go four-wheel drive. So the roads are in. And the sewer is along those roads that are in already.
Now, this is more for him now, is the, which you certainly stay. So our road ingress and egress into the park is down here at number one. That's the only place of ingress and egress? How many lanes do you have there?
Well, right now, it's just one lane in, probably two lanes out, right and left. Well... That's what needs to still...
But that simple park that y'all did in He Springs, you had one, one lane ingress, one lane egress, and because there wasn't enough parking, people were parking in the egress lane. I really think four lanes is needed because you're going to have people parking where they shouldn't be. One more thing, too. I also brought up the fact that splash pads have a certain liability associated with them. Has anybody done the research on that to know what our exposure will be or our premium increase might be based on the liability of splash pads? I'm not against splash pads. I just want to make sure we know with our eyes wide open what our future obligations are going to be. You done that?
I can't speak to the county's liability, but as far as splash pads, I mean, we've, we've done splash pads at Carolin's for them. So, I mean, we've done a lot of different splash pads. I mean, it's in the industry, you know, within municipalities, they're, they're really becoming even more popular right now. So we've got a lot of different vendors. There's a lot of good codes that are out there that protects, you know, designers like us to design those, vendors to have equipment to come in, maintenance-wise for the owners, the health part of these filters that are used that. It's, it's, it's like any industry, even like the sports fields. It's really, it's come a long way in the last 10 years. So I can't speak to the liability as far as what the county would have.
My point is, for my automobile insurance, if I want to pay less cost, I drive a Toyota Corolla. If I really want to up my cost and overhead, I'll drive a Corvette, brand-new Corvette, 700 horsepower. So I just kind of want to know that. And then one more thing, as we go forward, I think it'd be a good idea to get an idea from the rec department, what our operation cost is going to be as we complete Phase 1 or Phase 2 or Phase 3. Because we're going to have to budget accordingly to be able to put this in motion the minute it hits ground.
Yeah, because we, a certain percentage of our hospitality revenue is going to have to go to...
Personnel costs.
Personnel, and I don't know if that's 100,000, 200,000, or 500,000.
I just think we need to start having that thought as we go through the building process.
That is a good idea from Alan, is that we look at both at the same time. Alan, I'm so proud of you.
You agree with me? All right. One more thing, I just was curious about the frisbee golf, you know, I don't know if any frisbee golf in the area, might be a great idea. I don't know whether that's a growing sport or a dying sport. We need to, I would look, I would want to look long and hard at that.
They have world championships in Rock Hill.
Did 10 people show up or 1,000 people?
I don't know, a lot.
That's what, I'm just saying, I think we probably need to look at...
It's a great use because you've got the trails anyway, so they're going to be utilizing those trails, and you may venture off. And it's really good. Also, you're not doing a whole lot of selective clearing or grading. You could use the existing terrain that you already have, and it's very, it's very sensitive type of development. It's a, it's a great use.
And then they use it for the trail system. So it's all in one, and it's, I've been with my son, and they'll go up through the mountains. And like you said, it's very selective clearing, and people use it for walking and whatever, too.
We've seen a great popularity. Obviously, walking is always the number one programming, hands down. But we are seeing that frisbee and things like that are becoming popular because there's folks that are hybrid, that stay, can work from home. And so even where the neighborhood I live on, I've got three gentlemen that, that's what they do twice a week. They run out to go do frisbee golf at lunchtime. So they're, they're able to do that because they're close. So yes, it's, it's very interesting what the last couple of years have done to just the change of the, if you want to call it trends, but just how people are recreating and how they're wanting to get outside. So it's a, it'd be a great amenity for the county, not only for that, obviously, the community there, but for the county itself.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
The only thing before the end of December, sometime in December, at his last meeting, we're going to have some kind of pre-groundbreaking if, had to bring a bucket of sand up here from the site for Mr. Honeycutt to participate in, because he's been so instrumental in, in making this happen, and we're getting closer.
Getting closer.
All right. We appreciate that presentation. And now we come to citizens' comments. Please bear in mind, this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question-and-answer period. This is your opportunity to address council of your concerns. Ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. First, we have Gordon Johnston.
Evening, council members. Gordon Johnston, the address is 7401 Carmel Executive Park Drive in Charlotte, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf tonight of Century Communities, the applicant for Item 8C, our new agenda, which is the rezoning of approximately 20 acres on Shallow Unity Road. This rezoning was, had its first reading two weeks ago tonight, at which time we presented information about Century Communities, the company, as well as our plans for this property, which again are to combine this 20 acres with an adjacent 150 acres and develop what we're calling the Shallow Woods Community. Really nothing new in the past two weeks since we were here two Mondays ago, so I won't rehash the same information again, but I wanted to let you guys know that we're here in the audience tonight, and if there are any questions, anything worth discussion for the developer, Century Communities, we'd be happy to address that. Thank you for your time, and we would appreciate your vote for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. We have Mr. William Legg.
Good evening. William Legg, 986 Pennington Drive, Lancaster, South Carolina. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm not really speaking on any particular proposal, but would just like to address the rapid and indiscriminate approach to approving everything and anything that comes before the council, particularly apartments. There have been over 5,000 apartments approved that have not yet been built, and another 5,000 single-family homes and townhomes that have not yet been built, for over 10,000 houses that have been approved but not yet built. I bought a house in Indianland just north of Highway 75 about five years ago, and one of the driving factors in my decision was the good schools. At the time, the population was, in Indianland, was about 30,000 people, or about double the 2010 census. But at the time, schools were being built to address the problem. Van Wack had recently been completed, Harrisburg had been completed before that, and the high school was under construction. Now, according to the Rock Hill Herald, population is nearly 41,000, or almost 30% more in Indianland since I moved here. My family is now seriously considering homeschooling, as no new schools are even being considered, and the district is not pursuing serious options to deal with the expanding populations. You could look at their Facebook post if you want a good laugh at their solutions they're proposing. It's pretty ridiculous. Anyway, I haven't even begun to touch on the problem of the roads. Traffic's terrible. Everybody knows it in Indianland. Every intersection is congested. The roads are at overcapacity. And then there's the issue of emergency services. I think we have one sheriff substation in Indianland, there may be a second, you know, fire services, EMS, et cetera, et cetera. And then also, I know in some of the surrounding municipalities, I don't believe it's been an issue here, but water supply has been an issue that has caused, you know, developments to be stopped in, I think, Concord. I think Rock Hill's had the issue, I think a few other areas have. And we definitely don't want that to happen. Basically, I just think that this body should really consider, at the very least, an apartment moratorium, if not a complete and total residential construction moratorium, until, you know, new roads can be built, new schools can be built, existing roads can be widened, you know, that kind of stuff. The schools is a really big issue. If you're doubling your county population every 10 years and not building or only building a couple of schools, it's not sustainable. Action or inaction by this body will send a powerful message to members of the community either way, and I encourage you to do that, to look into moratoriums, and you might bring the incorporation movement back if you're not careful. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legg. That concludes our citizens' comments today. Let's move on down to Item 7, our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a move?
I move to approve consent items 7A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Mostella, second for Ms. McGriff. Any discussion? We're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our consent agenda. Let's move down to 8A Resolution 1222-R2022 regarding authorization of ARPA funding for sheriff's replacement vehicles. Do I have a motion? Second. Motion for Mr. Honeycutt. I heard Mr. Blackman, second. I think he beat you, Ms. McGriff. Mr. Marstall?
Mr. Chairman, council members, the council, as part of our budget process, established the opportunity to purchase 12 new vehicles for the sheriff's office using our federal ARPA funds for community knowledge. We received 19 million in federal dollars, and we can use it for a variety of factors, including replacement vehicles. As the sheriff was purchasing these 12, in addition to the eight that we used from another pot of funding, pot of funding from our capital improvement, these 20 total vehicles have come in up under, a little bit under budget. In addition, the technology that we use to outfit the sheriff's vehicles, laptops, tough books, modems, that funding was covered by other federal ARPA funds. So he's had some savings that has not fully expended the amount allocated for the vehicles. So long and short is that basically there's $95,000 in savings from the original amount authorized. So this would give him the opportunity to purchase two new vehicles in addition to the 12, one for a sheriff's deputy vehicle and one for an animal control vehicle. The request tonight is to add an additional 16,000... an animal control vehicle. The request tonight is to add an additional 16,000 in ARPA funding to allow the sheriff, in essence, to add two more vehicles to his purchase.
Any questions?
Mr. Mostell, would it bring that amount to his original request that he requested? So, it won't bring it to the?
No. When we are talking about vehicles for the sheriff, we're talking anywhere from 30 to 36 vehicles. And so, in essence, now he's adding the animal control. This will be 22 vehicles, yeah, basically of the 30 to 36 we were originally talking about.
Yeah. Yeah, let's get through this, and you can make a comment.
And then based on your action here, that will leave us 5 million still to allocate to the 19 million in ARPA federal funds.
All right. Mr. Honeycutt, it's related to the ARPA funding. We had an incident last week, and I think we had them all over the state, where we had some false reports, some school shootings. It was really a terrorist act.
Yeah, we had some unfortunate calls, and it caused quite a turmoil, but our fire, our sheriff's department responded tremendously. It was, it was really something. In discussing this with some of the firemen and other folks, there was a concern about firemen EMS going into that kind of a situation. They don't have bulletproof vests. I, I believe it would be good if we could purchase, using this ARCA money, bulletproof vests for our firemen and these EMS people who go in. If there hadn't been a shooter there, from what I understand, they could have been open game. And I don't think that's what we need to do with our personnel that's going in to try to save somebody's life. And I think we need to open that up for discussion, maybe at another meeting, Mr. Chairman, but I think it's something we need to look hard at. We've got the money, the ARCA money's there, and it's not that expensive to go ahead and outfit these, these people who are risking their lives in a situation like that. Let's protect them all we can.
All right. We'll, we'll look at that in the future. I'll put it on committee meeting. All right. Any, any other discussion related to the sheriff's vehicles? Hearing none. I think we're ready to vote on our resolution. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Public hearing and third reading of ordinance 2022-1823 regarding amending the fiscal year 2223 budget. Ms. Belk.
Mr. Chair, members of councils, there are no major changes to report for this meeting. We do need to complete the public hearing before a third reading can be approved.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Belk? We do have a public hearing scheduled, but no one signed up, so we'll move past our public hearing. I'm looking for a motion to bring this matter to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carnes, second from Mr. Mostella. Any discussion? Hearing none. I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. As we move down to 8C, I have to recuse myself because I have a vested interest in this project.
Okay, 8C. We have second reading of ordinance number 2022-1822 regarding rezoning property from low-density residential, LDR, to medium-density residential. The applicant is Century Communities. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt?
Second.
A second from Ms. McGriff. Do we have any discussion?
I got a question for the applicant. The MDR, do you propose this to do a cluster subdivision?
You can come up to the podium.
Yes, sir. We do. I think Rocks has some materials to present that has the proposed site plan, including the overall project.
Well, I personally think cluster development is one of the worst things that's happened in Lancaster County because of the small lots. Not a reflection on you, just a general statement.
Have any other discussion? We have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt and a second from Ms. McGriff. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, we have four affirmative, two opposed. We're ready for Mr. Harper to come back. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on down to 8D, first reading of ordinance 2022-1825 regarding approval of bonds for the Roseland Residential Improvement District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Carnes, second from Ms. McGriff. Mr. DeBeauz.
Mr. Chair, members of council, y'all recall that in October of 2020, council approved the petition of Lennar to create this residential improvement district. Then in December of 2022, council authorized creation of the district, implementation of its improvement plan, and the finance of improvements within that district issuance of bond and approved an assessment role. I will note that the original assessment role attached to this item was an incorrect one and an error. I've handed out the proper assessment role to y'all tonight as a handout at y'all's spot, and I believe clerk to council circulated that last week. That housekeeping item being addressed, Lennar is now petitioning the county to issue the bonds. This bond issuance is for an amount not to exceed 15 million. The enabling ordinances that created the district do allow for issuance of bonds in more than one tranche or issuance. But at this point, Lennar is approaching the county for 15 million principal amount. There's an engineering report included in the materials, and it's included in the, as an exhibit to the bond ordinances. As of the date of this reading, just for your information, Lennar spent approximately $30 million in land development and activities. Of that, approximately 20 million has been used for the planning, engineering, permitting, and construction of the improvements that constitute this bond project. Also is set forth in that report, Lennar estimates that their total infrastructure spend for the Series 2022 project will be about 50 million roughly. There will be a acquisition and project funding agreement wherein these public improvements are dedicated to the appropriate governmental entities at the appropriate times. You heard Mr. Hardy speak on the park assessment earlier about the Roseland Boulevard Road and that it is almost completed. That is one of those acquisition and project funding agreement pieces of infrastructure that would come over. Of course, there'd be appropriate letters of credit to see that it gets completed, just like any roads that the county has accepted in the past under PDD plans or development agreement plans. Finally, and I'm trying to just hit the highlights here for y'all, Lennar anticipates their yearly assessment will not exceed 1,550 per home, and as was touched on earlier, out of this 15 million dollar bond issuance, the county is entitled to a 4% developer fee. It must be used on improvements within the district. It's always been contemplated by the county, at least thus far, that the 4% would roll back into the park, and as you've heard earlier, that amount would be approximately 600,000. Ms. Heiser from Burr Foreman is here tonight, who you all know well. She can answer any more granular details of the bond documents. So, she's out there, and I'm up here. I'm not a bond lawyer, but I've hoped, I hope I've covered the highlights and at least provided y'all some information to prompt any questions that you may have.
John, one thing, at 4% for the county, it has to be used in that district. Can it be used at the park? I mean, is that?
Correct, yes.
Can, okay. So, we can use it in it.
And to clarify, the 4% is per issuance. So, if they do another issue, there'll be another 4% on the next issuance.
4% of, yes, the par amount of the issuance.
That was my question. Is it, are there going to be more bonds, more than the 15 million?
Yes, that's contemplated. Lennar actually has their bond counsel here tonight as well, Joe Lucas, and they can speak to some of those future issuances. But yes, there's at least one other, perhaps two other issuances contemplated, and Joe can sort of.
Yes. Evening, council. Thanks for having us. I'm here representing Lennar. And just specifically on the, the second or third bond issue, there would be multiple series, but the expectation is those would not exceed 22 million in total, whether it's one more or multiple, 22 million, and approximately 16 and a half million of that would be the portion of those bonds that would go to projects. So, the balance is debt service reserve, cost of issuance, stuff like that.
So, this, this summer, we heard a 1,550 per home is going to be higher with the new bonds that are going to be issued?
No, that's the same price across the whole development. So, this first bond issue is really focusing on phases one and two of the development, which is 804 homes. Total project is 1,860 homes across seven phases. So, the second bond issue, second or third bond issues, would be used to finance the remaining infrastructure to build out phases three through seven, and all the homes have that not to exceed 15.
So, this is going to be similar to Walnut Creek, but the different assessment bonds? Is that correct?
Not exactly. This is a, that was more of a, the old-style improvement district. This is the new residential improvement.
I know, but they're both the same. See, and I.
Yeah, but we're not doing separate bond area issuances. It's a little bit different structure.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, but I got an issue with these, the way the county does these residential improvement districts, because we're really just increasing the mortgage of the people that are, live in our district. And I have two of these. I have one in Sun City, and I have one in Walnut Creek, and a number of those people have told me they had no idea that this assessment was going to be on their, more on their bills. I mean, they didn't know by the when they closed their eyes, so it was surprised them. This particular one, evidently, I voted to push it forward, so I have no choice but to vote for this bond. But I, I do have that issue with the, with the county get involved in these residential improvement districts.
Sure. Just a couple, couple of just points to make. One is the, the concept of these is the benefits that the homeowner receives from the infrastructure that gets put in at a higher level, you know, quicker, more efficient, is what the 1,550 a year pays for.
I understand that. I understand. I just got, I just, I got a little problem with the county being involved.
The second part is, and, and Mr. Hardy can, can confirm this, but Lennar does these all over the country, especially Florida and other parts of the southeast, and I know that their process of notifying folks is a very strong process.
I have, I have no doubt at all, because we've had this discussion before.
The unfortunate thing is, there are sometimes, well, let me step back. Anybody that buys a, that bought a Polte home in Sun City and buys a Lennar home in Walnut Creek, signs what's called a master disclosure agreement, and no, you don't know, that they have to sign that agreement, and it's a legal document that gets recorded at the county. So, those folks, though they may say they weren't aware, if they bought from the builder, they were absolutely aware, and it gets repeated by the attorney at the time of closing with another hard document, not an electronic document to sign. So, I understand the concern, and some, some folks believe that, you know, they didn't sign something, but I can assure you that in this case, they are signing, they will sign a master disclosure. And at Elizabeth, which is the sprat property in Fort Mill, where the bonds haven't floated yet, however, Lennar has started selling homes, they are already signing a master disclosure agreement, saying that the bonds are forthcoming because Fort Mill's approved those. So, I hear you, but I just want to assure you that, that if that ever comes up, Mr. Graham, that should go back to the builder because legally, they must disclose that.
I understand. I will also be interested in knowing how many other counties are using these residential improvement bonds, because I have talked to some neighboring counties, and they don't.
York County has approved in the development agreement for the sprat property, which is 1,360 homes, 300 apartments, and 84 acres of commercial for these bonds to be approved in York County. In Berkeley County, along the coast, they're approved all the time. There's another county on the coast, and I don't know the names.
Dorchester.
Dorchester County, they're approved all the time. We're building 7,000 homes in a community called Summers Corner where those bonds floated. So, in South Carolina, they're used readily, and Ms. Heiser probably knows better than I as to what counties those are. However, they're, they're widely used within the state of South Carolina.
Isn't that sprat one in the town of Fort Mill?
Yeah, York County.
But it's in the town, is it not?
It is. It's in Fort Mill.
Yeah, it's in Fort Mill. It's in the city. It's not in York County.
It's in the city.
Yeah.
But it's part of York County.
That's clear.
Yeah. Thanks.
We're good.
Mr. Hardy, weren't there two highly sophisticated investors that were going to buy these bonds? Vanguard and something like somebody else, or?
Well, they haven't floated yet. That's the idea of tonight, is to get approval for us to allow.
FMS?
FMS bonds. FMS bonds to go to market, which we anticipate that happening in the first quarter of 2023. And typically, it's large institutional companies like that that'll buy them. Yes, sir.
And then this question's for our attorney, not Grandular, of course. So, we, we took action earlier to set up the, the district, and then I think we were talking 15 million at that point, right?
I think when the district was established, it was still the not to exceed maybe 32 or 35.
Thirty, okay.
Franny's recollection's 30. I defer to her on that.
All right. But then my other question would be, so how many different tranches will be issued then?
So, that's probably more of a question for Joe and John, but I understand at least one more, probably two more, correct?
It's going to depend on timing and absorption in the development, but currently, the reason we're asking for 15 million is that the spend in the development is around 20, as John described earlier, and so we think we've got projects completed to get the net bond proceeds, you know, to pay for or acquire enough in projects now, but not enough to do all 30-plus million.
But in its entirety, we're talking 30, 35 million?
That's right.
That's good enough. Thank you.
It's basically like building a house. You draw, make draws on it as you get stuff completed. It's the way I sort of look at it, is the farther along you get, you sit, make a draw on the, on the bond.
All right. Any more discussion, questions for anyone?
I would say it's great being with y'all tonight. Always enjoy seeing y'all, and if you do have any questions, or even about the next ordinance, just please let me know.
Good to see you also, Franny.
Yeah, one more quick question, Franny, since just seeing you here. So, why do we, why are we taking two actions? It seems like we could have accomplished all this last time we voted on this, instead of having to come back to us to give permission to issue the bonds.
We've, we, we actually very purposely separated the creation from the district from the issuance of the bonds. One important reason is that it really allowed Lennar to actually start the project and have lots of earth moved and have a significant investment. So, I would say that one thing about this district that's really different from the others that were done in the '02s and '06s is that, that there's not just a pot of money created that the developer's going to draw on. They've actually been in the process of spending the money, and they're going to be reimbursed. So, I think that's a valuable difference between prior districts and this district. Now, the, the next ordinance is. Now, the next ordinance is just, there was, there were, there was a small era, as we described the district, so the next ordinance is just to clean that up. And again, any questions? And I think we'll either be here on all three readings, or we'll at least be here for the final reading, where there will be a public hearing. But during the course of that, if there are any questions, you just let John know, or your administrator would be glad to get answers to you very quickly.
Ms. Heiser, can I make sure we punctuate what you said? The creation ordinance did stipulate there had to be the spending with receipts and documentation before they could even come and ask for the bond issuance, so.
Correct. This is a much more, a process where we are going more slowly and being more, even more careful, even more careful than we were 20 years ago.
All right, thank you, Ms. Heiser. Any more discussion? I think we're ready to vote on first reading of orders 2022-1825. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval, first reading of 2022-1825. Let's go down to first reading of orders 2022-1829 regarding removal of property from the Roslin Residential Improvement District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Who gave me the first? Mr. Graham. And second was?
Mostella.
Mr. Mostella. Too many people talking at one time. All right, Mr. DeBeaus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. As referenced by Ms. Heiser a moment ago, this is a companion ordinance to the bond issuance ordinance you just voted on. In actually exploring setting up a fire fee district for Roslin, which was discussed at its inception, and which Mr. Hardy and Lennar are still agreeable to, that structure in establishing a fire district requires that you identify the boundaries of the district. In vetting the boundaries, it was determined that there was a 50-acre discrepancy in the acreage within Roslin. This ordinance addresses that discrepancy. Just for your education on the creation of the fire district, that's still online, but y'all have some other broader kind of policy considerations and discussions around fire services, period. So until that discussion is fleshed out further, the fire district for Roslin is on hold. Essentially, the county don't want to be in a position where it creates something and maybe has to undo it or alter it within a year or so. So in any event, this ordinance basically amends the district boundaries. Lennar is required to consent to it. That consent document's attached to the ordinance. The new acreage for the district is 1,395.829 acres.
All right, any questions? Hearing none. I think we're ready to vote on first reading of orders 2022-1829. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. We have unanimous approval, first reading of orders 2022-1829. So I guess we'll move on down to our executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter or administrator's evaluation?
Oh, moved.
I have a motion from Mr. McGriff to have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Graham. All in favor, raise your right hand. Have unanimous approval. We are now in executive session.
We own.
I'd like to call this meeting the county council back to order. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session? Have a motion for Mr. Blackman, second for Ms. McGriff. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval to come out of executive session. All right. Do we have any...
Say your thing.
In executive session, personnel matters discussed, the administrator's evaluation, no votes taken, no decisions made.
Chairman, per conversations in executive session, the vice chairman has been authorized to negotiate an employment contract with Mr. Dennis Marstall to serve as the county administrator on behalf of Lancaster County and to engage in those negotiations in accordance with Lancaster County Council's instructions.
I have a second. Second from Ms. McGriff. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval coming out of executive session. It is now 8:34. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adjourn these proceedings.
I have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Carnes.